I see seven o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board to order on May 10th, 2022. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? Seeing none, I will note for the record that participating in the meeting this evening for the Select Board, Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on our agenda is to consider approval of the minutes. And I see we have minutes from April 26th and April 28th. I am prepared to proceed. Bill?
I'm ready.
And Liz?
Ready.
So let's start with April 26, 2022 minutes. I'll take a motion on that.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 26, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye, approved. And then we have two sets of minutes for April 28th.
I will make a motion to approve both sets of minutes dated April 28, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. Minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Katie Sutton on behalf of Hingham Unity Council for We Are Hingham, a community conversation to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on Sunday, May 22, 2022, from 2:00 PM to 4:30 PM. And I see Katie is here. Please tell us about this event.
Hi, well, thank you for having me here tonight. The Unity Council is doing this conversation. It's connected to a project, a visual project that Brooke Bartlett has spearheaded called We Are Hingham. People take their portraits or she comes and does it for them and she's going to be hanging them all over town soon. And she didn't want that to be a conversationless conversation. So we're going to meet in person and we have a facilitator coming from a Winchester organization who's going to help us. They have small group conversations with folks about why they're here, what they like about our town, what they might see happening in the future, perhaps things that could be better, things that should be preserved, things like that. And it's going to be these little moderated groups. And the thought was that after having what, you know, are definitely going to be some engaging conversations, we were going to end and we thought perhaps people might like to enjoy each other's community after that for a bit. So that's when clandestine kitchen was going to serve some food. We have a permit for that and she was like, oh, I've been doing a lot with the brewery and so the brewery could also sell some beer, just cans of beer.
Great. And how many people do you expect to attend the meeting?
We're not sure. We're hoping a lot. We only have about 25 registered this time, but we're hoping like over 100.
Yep, that'd be great. And this is an outdoor event, is that correct?
Yeah, it's under the Jane Cheever Car Amphitheater at South Shore Conservatory.
Is there any reason for you to give thought to a rain date?
Well, because it's under the amphitheater, we were not doing a rain date.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure you've looked at it. I agree, I don't think that's really critical. And this is going to be, I think, a great opportunity. So, so thank you for doing that.
I hope you'll come.
Yes. Tom, has the police chief looked at this?
He has, and he is present.
Oh, there he is, Chief Jones.
Good evening. Joe, how are you? Katie, nice to see you. So yeah, I've reviewed the application and I have no issues at all with the permit.
Terrific. Liz, any comments or questions?
I'm certainly excited about this event. Thank you, Katie, and the Unity Council for putting it together. I think it's an important piece to engage people in actual conversation in person. But I have no, no questions really about the application or concerns. I did review it. Certainly, we've seen lots of very successful events in that amphitheater at the conservatory with Untold Brewery as well as clandestine kitchen. So no concerns there.
Great. Mr. Ramsey?
No specific questions. Katie, thanks so much for the invitation. Hoping to make it after, I believe the Battle of Grape Island is earlier in the day and I'm planning to head over after Grape Island. And, you know, I love Brooke's photography. It's wonderful. They're wonderful, wonderful photos and clandestine kitchen, Untold, going to be a great event. So thanks so much for the invitation, looking forward to it.
Are there members of the public with comments or questions? I am seeing none, so I'm prepared to accept a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Katie Sutton on behalf of Hingham Unity Council. Hashtag We Are Hingham, a community conversation to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on Sunday, May 22, 2022, from 2:00 PM to 4:30 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. Katie? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have on our agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Suddenly Simple Events on behalf of the Old Colony Montessori School for a fundraiser for Old Colony Montessori School to be held at the Hingham Historical Society on Saturday, May 14, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And is Melissa here? Melissa Peralta?
Yeah, she's here.
There you are. Melissa, you gotta get yourself on mute.
I'm so sorry, I'm not good at the Zoom calls.
So if you can please tell us about this event.
Yes, it's a fundraiser for the Montessori School. They'll be hosting a casino night there and they've hired us to bartend for the evening. We'll be doing beer and wine in sangria and it will be a three-hour event. And we'll have past appetizers and I believe they've hired a casino company to contract the games.
That's correct.
Excellent.
And what's your estimate as to the attendance there?
I believe we're expecting... I'm sorry, I'm guessing at this point it's going to be closer to 60 people, 55 to 60 people.
Yeah, because I do see on the application you indicated about 75.
That's correct. We were hoping for 75, but these post-COVID times are not conducive to excellent attendance.
Yes. So I will just add in at this point that both of my children went to the Old Colony Montessori School. I am a former president of the Board of the Montessori School. And so I absolutely support what you're doing and I'm looking forward to great success there.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yes. Chief Jones? Do you have any comments?
Good evening again. The only comment I have is that I've reviewed the application and have no issues at all with the one-day permit.
Great.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I did not have you introduce yourself, Carol.
Sorry, I am Carol Lacoste. I'm a parent at OCMS and head of the PTO currently.
And are you a Hingham resident?
I'm not, I'm a Weymouth resident, but we've been part of the school since 2016.
That's great. Okay, Liz Klein, questions?
No questions or concerns about the application. Sounds like a great event, thank you.
Thank you.
And Bill Ramsey?
I know questions. Best of luck with your event.
Thank you very much.
Are there members of the public with comments? I see none. I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Suddenly Simple Events on behalf of Old Colony Montessori School for a fundraiser for Old Colony Montessori School to be held at the Hingham Historical Society on Saturday, May 14, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. You're approved and best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the amendment to agreement with Contract Corp. to expand the scope of work to include the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant's recloser and capacitor sites as part of the fiber optic municipal network. And is Bill Hardigan here?
I am.
There you are, Bill. And is Tom here as well?
I don't see Tom.
Okay. So, Bill, I will turn it over to you.
Certainly, certainly, we're all aware of the Townwide Fiber Project. Part of that is a 192-strand loop of fiber that circumferences the town. Along that loop, there are a number of devices and this is where I was hoping Tom would be here because he can explain what these reclosures and such are because I'm not sure what they are. But they help him manage the network and by having connectivity to them, they'll be able to centrally manage them and would be more proactive on things. Since our fiber is running on those same poles and running right past these, great opportunity to use some of the pairs of fiber within that. And while the trucks and the equipment are all still here and splicing and everything else, we're going to realize significant savings. I know it's $121,000 on this, but he'd had a prior quote that was significantly higher because that would have entailed him pulling his own fiber so he didn't have that material cost, which we've already covered with the 192 that's part of our project.
Great. So the costs associated with this aspect of the project, will they be borne by the town or by the light plant?
Light plant.
Okay. And will this work have any unintended effects such as degrading the service for the town or is this just additive?
This is additive. The 192 pair, 192-strand loop was designed for future uses, including things such as this, so that was factored into it.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Just one question, Bill, about the timeline. Does it affect the original timeline for the town's project?
No, we thought of this as they were running the fiber past these locations and a little slack was left or splice points were planned proactively where they would be able to easily extract this. So no, no delay to the project whatsoever.
Great. It sounds like a really efficient way to do it. So thank you for being so proactive about it.
It's a win-win all around and we've been working very closely with HMLP, obviously. We're on their polls. It's been a very collaborative effort for this project.
Good, good, glad to hear it.
Bill?
Yeah, just one quick question, maybe this is for Tom or Michelle. Do we get, so do we build a light plant for this work or do we get reimbursed? How does it work transactionally for the cost?
They're going to transfer us the amount so that this work can continue. If you look in the contract, there's a line about it being subject to and contingent upon the transfer of funds from HMLP, which Tom Morehand has already said, they sort of asked us to do it this way to make it a little bit easier.
Okay, got it. Good to know, thank you.
So just to follow up on Bill's question, does that mean that the work does not get done until there's a transfer of the funds to the town?
We can make the transfer happen tomorrow if it is holding it up. We just need an account number for who to pull from.
Great. I don't see any members of the public, but I'll ask if there are members of public with comments or questions. Seeing none, I will take a motion.
Make a motion, authorize the town admin to sign the amendment to agreement with Contract Corp. to expand the scope of work to include the Hingham Municipal Light Plant, HMLP, in addition of recloser and capacitor sites as part of the fiber optic municipal, sorry about that, network in an amount and not to exceed $121,662.70, subject to and conditioned upon a transfer of the funds for this amendment from HMLP to the town.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. We are approved.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, we have the opportunity to consider approval of an agreement with Hingham Access and Media, Inc., doing business as Harbor Media. And I do not see Laura Burns here, although I do see someone from Harbor Media here. But Tom, if you can...
Sure.
Begin with this.
Sure, yeah, I can kick this off. So this is, if you remember, we had done a couple of extensions to the prior Harbor Media or HCAM as it's labeled in the contract, Harbor Media's contract with the town to provide us with peg access, that's public, educational, and government access television on behalf of the community. So they do our peg access work and this is a contract to continue for the next, oh my gosh, what did I want to say, five years? Is this a five-year contract?
Five years.
Five years, thank you. I get stuck because most of our contracts are three. So for the next five years to do this work for us. If there's any questions, I think we had this conversation, what, two meetings ago, maybe three meetings ago, in depth, Ms. Burns was here, walked us through her board's participation. The cable acts, the Cable Advisory Committee for the town has, was a full participant in the negotiations and the discussions and has fully endorsed this contract, as has the Harbor Media Board of Directors.
I just have a couple of questions. Tom, the version that was included in our pack is a Word version that is unsigned. Is this agreement, has it been signed by anyone else?
It has and I pulled it up for you. There's Laura's signature on the bottom.
Okay. And am I correct that HCAM is also servicing other towns, towns other than Hingham?
They are now, yes. They now provide the same peg access services to the town of Norwell.
And I'm just trying to understand how their work with other towns, in this case Norwell, would that have any impact on their work with Hingham?
No, that was a big part of the discussion and conversations that we had with them. And this was very much designed to not impact Hingham's quality or quantity of television coverage.
Okay. Liz Klein, any questions?
I really don't. I was involved in this contract process and I know that there was a lot of collaboration and some good new additions regarding production quality and programming. So I feel comfortable with that, Joe.
Great. Bill?
I know a lot of work went into this contract and it's an improvement from the last one. I've read it over a couple of times, I'm comfortable signing it moving forward.
Great. So then I will ask if there are members of the public with comments or questions. I see none. I'm prepared for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the grant agreement between the Town of Hingham and Hingham Community Access and Media Incorporated, doing business as Harbor Media, for a five-year term commencing on May 16, 2022 through May 15, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye, approved. Next item on our agenda is appointment of liquor enforcement officers. And we have several candidates. Chief Jones, if you could just explain what this is about and if you could introduce the candidates to us.
Sure, Joe. So this is a annual appointment of the town's police detectives as the liquor enforcement officers for the town of Hingham. The liquor enforcement officers do unannounced inspections of all licensed liquor slather plants in Hingham and they provide an annual report to the Board of Selectmen on those inspections. So for consideration this evening, you have Sergeant Detective Phil Emmett, who was in charge of detective unit, Detective Heather Hermita, Detective Michael Gervazi, and Detective Scott Tracy.
And was there any special training or anything that they needed to complete to get this assignment?
Just by detectives, that's default who the enforcement officers are for the town and they do receive training on liquor inspections.
Okay. And you mentioned that they file a report with the Select Board. Have we received that report for this year?
No, generally it's at the end of the year, November, I believe, is when they complete it.
Okay, great. And Bill, are you participating or do you need to recuse yourself from this?
Oh, yeah, I can participate, but thanks for asking. Yeah, my brother's involved, but thank you for asking.
Well, while I have you, Bill, any comments or questions?
Yeah, just real quick, Chief, generally, is it, is their role generally to go in and to make sure that establishments aren't selling alcohol to underage, underage individuals?
So that's a different function and we do though, also we do the underage things for violations of sale of liquor to minors. This is an inspection of the premises to make sure that everything's properly posted, that the liquor, whatever license they have is what they're actually serving. So in other words, they couldn't serve hard liquor if they have a wine and malt beverage license, et cetera. So it's just an inspection of the premises itself, of the bar and of the bartender, make sure the manager's listed appropriately and then that report goes back to the board. But we do also do those inspections that you mentioned, the underage things, but those are separate.
These are separate, okay, understood, thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
You are.
Liz?
Chief, are these new appointments or are the detectives currently in these roles?
So a lot of them are in the roles already. Detective Scott Tracy might be the only addition this year. His brother, Phil Tracy, was promoted to sergeant and Scott Tracy applied and was promoted to detective. So he's the only new one, the rest would be reappointments.
Okay, excellent. I did the ride along with Scott Tracy.
He's great, yeah.
He is great. Yeah.
Great guy, great guy, he is.
Chief, is there any budgetary impact on this with these appointments?
No, they do their inspections during the course of their regular shifts, so there's no impact on the budget.
And the establishments that they visit, are we talking restaurants and also like package stores or what are we talking about? Where would they make these visits?
So it's licensed liquor establishments, so it's bars and restaurants that they do the inspections on. The stores that sell alcohol don't fall into the same requirements, but the inspections are on the actual places that sell beer and wine, so restaurants and bars and hard liquor. So.
Do we, is there also an inspection for liquor stores?
Yeah, so that's similar to what Bill was talking about, underage violations, et cetera. Those are the unannounced where we send people in either without an ID or underage and see if they can purchase alcohol at a store that sells to the public.
Got it, okay, thank you. Any member of the public, comments or questions? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I make a motion to appoint the following detectives as agents of the Select Board to enforce the laws of the Liquor Control Act and the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, ABCC Regulations for All Licensed Liquor Establishments in the Town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2023. Sergeant Detective Phil Emmett, Detective Heather Hermita, Detective Michael Gervazi, Detective Scott Tracy.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye, approved. Chief, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Maddie's Promise Proclamation, and I understand that the family would like to be present when we take this up and they are not available this evening, so we will take this item up at our next meeting. Next item we have on our agenda is a proclamation for Rabbi Shira H. Joseph, who is retiring after 19 years. I will read the proclamation and then make the motion. This is a proclamation for the Town of Hingham. Whereas Hingham is a community that recognizes the contributions of clergy of all faiths to our civic and cultural heritage, and whereas Rabbi Shira H. Joseph has served as the spiritual leader of congregation Shara Shalom since 2003, and whereas Rabbi Joseph has been an advocate for education and for reaching out to persons with special needs, and whereas Rabbi Joseph has promoted interfaith dialogue in Hingham and throughout the South Shore, and whereas Rabbi Joseph served as the president of the Hingham Hall Religious Leaders Association in 2009, and whereas Rabbi Joseph received the Massachusetts Psychological Association Humanitarian Award in 2018 for outstanding contributions to the humanitarian goals of society through service and activism and to the enhancement of its educational, psychological, and social process. And whereas Rabbi Joseph was awarded an honorary Doctor of Divinity in 2020 for 25 years of service to the Jewish people from the Hebrew Union College Jewish Institute of Religion, and whereas Rabbi Joseph is retiring as the spiritual leader of congregation Shara Shalom after 19 years of service, now therefore we, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, hereby issue this proclamation to honor Rabbi Shira H. Joseph upon her retirement. So with that, I will make a motion to issue the proclamation as read, honoring Shira, Rabbi Shira H. Joseph upon her retirement.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. Next item on our agenda is the Town Administrator Annual Performance Review. This is something that is required under the Special Act that was adopted in September of 2016, creating the Town Administrator position for the town, and it's also a requirement of the employment contract that we have with the current Town Administrator. And the statute and his contract require that this board, the Select Board, do an evaluation with respect to his ability to accomplish four separate tests. And they are, first, to supervise municipal employees properly, second, to administer town government effectively, third, to effectuate policy, and fourth, to accomplish established goals. So those are the four criteria that I'd like to address this evening. Each of us has the opportunity to speak with the Town Administrator on a one-on-one basis to give our own individual and additional comments. But at this point, I want to focus on the four topics that I just mentioned. And what I'd like to do, well, I can ask my fellow members, there are two ways to do this. One is I can go through each topic and we can do a round robin discussion on that one topic, or I can just turn it to each of you to give your comments and I'm sure they would include all of the four items. Anyone have a preference or I can, I'll tell you, my preference would be just to turn it over to one of you and then the other and then we can just continue unless someone would like to focus on each of those topics in a round robin method. Bill, your thoughts?
I think we should just go, we each offer individual comments and then rather than going topic by topic, I've already spoken to Tom early this afternoon, one-on-one, so I can kind of give kind of overview of what our discussion was.
Liz, you okay with that? Liz, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, Bill, then I will start with you.
Great, so uh you know, Tom, I guess what what I would just to uh reiterate some of the topics we talked about this afternoon is uh very much appreciate all of your hard work this year. Uh some of the highlights, I think, you know, based on the work you've done. You know, you continue to steward the town through uh the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um showing, you know, tremendous tremendous leadership and helping to keep the residents of the town safe. And your hard work there has been very much appreciated. While this year, you know, I don't think was as challenging as the previous year. Your ability to get us through the budget process and the budget cycle uh this year, I thought was was also very challenging, particularly um as we headed into town meeting. And I thought you did, you know, a great job uh updating us, keeping us posted on uh the 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 funding sources that were coming in. And the different options that we had as a town, uh sorry, as a board, uh to set policy for the meeting. You know, how how are we gonna get our path to a balanced budget? Um and that was, you know, very much appreciated uh for us in terms of, you know, were we gonna go into go the path of an override this year? How are we going to um, you know, get through this process? I thought you did a a great job getting us there. Um and you know, again, your your strengths of your, and I can't say this enough, your 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 work ethic and your ability to manage people, I think, is really just um a tremendous asset that you have, and it's a huge benefit to us to to have that uh to have that, those qualities in you. I know that you work um you know, seven days a week. Um and you really don't take much time off. I mean, you are so invested in this town and this community. When I was doing your evaluation, I think one of the areas was, you know, you know, investment in the community or uh in the in the job, and I can't think of an individual as more invested in in this town and this community and the work that you do, and very much appreciate all your hard work, Tom. In terms of, you know, going forward, um you know, I'm gonna be very candid. I think next year is going to be uh one of the most challenging years that this board that this community has maybe ever had. Um, you know, and I I've been involved uh with town government uh quite a long time. Um as you know, many of you know, at a very young age. And, you know, we are looking at in the fall, you know, funding two major capital projects, you know, the voters will be asked to um questions about debt exclusions, about how do we fund two major, much-needed capital projects? And then we're looking at a potential um operational override in the spring. So I think the challenges that lie ahead for, you know, this community, this board are significant. So we will be, you know, relying on you and your team uh in the months ahead and um you know, with 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 tremendous, tremendous uh uh emphasis going going forward, so um but we know, but we need to be ready, need to be planning ahead, going forward, and we'll be uh ready for the challenges ahead, so thank you for all your hard work. Thank you in particular for your tremendous commitment for this community and looking forward to getting after it um in the next year.
Thank you, Bill. I'm looking forward to it as well.
Bill, um I I'm not speaking for Liz, I'm speaking for myself that you've stolen a lot of our thunder. But I will turn it over now to Liz.
Yes, um I agree with what Bill said. Thank you, Tom. Um it's it's been an honor to work with you. I appreciate your your patience, helping me get up to speed. And I was reflecting on the last year, you know, all the change that has been happening at Town Hall with a new select board member, a new town clerk, um new people in planning and zoning and a new social worker, a new ATA for operations, a new, you know, a new ATA structure. A lot has happened, um and I I think it's really impressive how how that has all been planned and implemented. Um and I certainly look forward to to how that will continue to increase um our capacity, increase our efficiencies, and and really optimize the the work that we're doing. In addition to what Bill said, I did want to just uh speak a little bit about the Sustainable Budget Task Force because that was kind of a unique experience that I had this year. Um and again, thinking about the primary areas of of your job, Tom, the town administrators' responsibilities. I think the Sustainable Budget Task Force spans several, you know, looking at leadership, planning and organizing, financial management. Um I think through your leadership, Tom, that the sustainable budget, creating the Sustainable Budget Task Force really brought together people critical to budget planning and that process. Um and you, I think, worked very hard to create an environment for us where we could do the work, the hard work of asking questions, asking hard questions, um collect gathering data, doing the analysis, and ultimately coming up with recommendations um for short-term and long-term strategies. Um so I, you know, I look forward to that work continuing and that report, it was kind of the the starting point of really the the work ahead. Um and to Bill's point, we certainly have a lot of work ahead of us in this next year. Um so one, one thing I I would like to focus on is really documenting the budget process, um understanding the optimal timeline for that um as well as the override process, what that needs to look like, and and certainly start planning um for how how we need to put that together and how we need to communicate that to the community.
Liz, thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz.
So, Tom, um you've heard a lot uh from from Bill and Liz, and and I fully support what they've said, their their views of your strengths, your commitment. I can't say enough about your work, your work ethic um and your ability to lead Town Hall. That is not necessarily an easy task, and you are absolutely up to it. Uh so thank you. There are a number of priorities that I see for the town. And if you've listened to any of my campaign speeches, I've actually identified twelve of them. And your focus and attention on these projects, as I've looked at them, has already been there, and it's been very impressive. Uh the first one, which is the budget, you know, we need to reconcile our expenditures with the ongoing revenue. You and I have had discussions, you've had discussions with numerous other town officials to deal with that. Uh the second is bringing to completion the two major capital projects. Bill mentioned it, you know, the foster school and the public safety facility. You've been on top of that. Um you and I worked from the very beginning on the um public safety facility, getting that committee going. And your ability to identify the goal and effectuate it was just outstanding. Next, which something that we have to be talking about that's sort of been a back burner is expanding the senior center. Um and you have also identified that as priority. I want to make sure that 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 continues to be a priority. And that uh, you know, we move forward with that. Um I know we can't physically move forward in terms of um putting a, as they say, you know, shovel in the ground because we can't do it until the police move to their new headquarters, but getting the planning going, getting a sense of urgency is something that I know you're committed to. You've also demonstrated your commitment to environmental concerns. And that's something that has been front and center as we review town projects, as we're looking at acquisitions of vehicles. Um you have made sure that it's a it's a goal that the town is moving effectively towards. So I got to thank you for that. The Intercoastal Resiliency Improvement Project. You and I have spent a lot of time on that. We've gone out there in not-nice weather to see how things were going, to look and make sure that we had the right um support, the right consultants, uh moving forward. Uh sometimes it's been a politically challenging situation. But you have been a leader in making sure that that continues when we have obstacles. You're making sure those obstacles don't stop the project, uh and that's really just so impressive.
I might not have a jacket with me, but I'll get one.
Right, I know you, Tom goes out in like freezing cold weather, you know, in in short sleeves sometimes, it's just crazy. The you've not lost sight of the um of the intangible values. So making sure that town services and businesses are accessible to persons with disabilities. Uh that's something that continues to be a priority, and you have made sure that it stays on our agenda. So uh the your ability to make sure that it's an established goal and that the town moves towards it is very impressive. Uh similarly, with respect to our stock of affordable housing. Uh we sometimes take for granted that we've achieved forty B. But you're constantly making sure that we're not resting on those laurels, and you look at uh what's happening with the town in terms of the growth of housing because that that ratio can change. And so the fact that you that you keep that uh in our sights and on your sights is very impressive. You have moved effectively in re-establishing a public swimming pool at the South Shore Country Club. Uh I know there've been obstacles, there've been issues, um cost issues, um issues is not the right word, cost considerations. Making sure that a butters, that their concerns are listened to. And again, that's something that you really spend time on, and and it it's just amazing that given everything that's on your plate, that remains a priority, a priority. So uh there are other features uh that I think are important uh for the town that that we can talk about. But uh again, I've been very impressed with your ability to administer the town government effectively. Um and that to make sure that the top priorities for this town are the top priorities for you. And um I look forward to working forward, look, look forward to working with you again uh as the next year proceeds. Thank you. So Tom, this is your, this is your chance for a rebuttal.
Uh thank you for all of that, all three of you. You know, I've had the the pleasure to work in a place, and not everyone could say this, and that that it's a very sad statement, but not everyone can say this, but I love where I work. I love the job I do. I love the people I work with. And that goes for the three of you as well as the staff um that I have the pleasure of of leading every day. I just uh, I just can't say enough things about this town. The volunteers are just shockingly fantastic and never-ending. Um and it's just if I ever had to draw up a dream job, this would be it, and you three and the folks before you give me the opportunity to do it, so uh thank you for the opportunity. That's that's what I'm taking from this. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the obvious, that everything you just said that I do, I don't do any of it alone. I do it with an amazing team. Not the least of which includes the two folks on on this on this um screen here with Michelle Montzger and Art Robert. My uh, the team we have up in this office is second to none. Uh it's just fantastic. We have, you know, our department heads, our um our admin staff, our uh the 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 team that that do the town's work every day is, you you should be, I know you are, but you should be incredibly proud of them. They all work very hard, and you say that I have a strong work ethic and that it in that I care about the town, that's true. Those words are true of every one of our employees, and I'm extraordinarily proud to be a pal, so anyway, uh thank you all very much for everything.
So, Tom, we've just patted ourselves on the back. We, as Bill said, we have tremendous challenges coming up. Um and um we will be under a stress test uh to make sure that we can meet those challenges, and I think the three of us look forward to meeting that challenge with you. Uh and you'll let us know that we're on course, and if not, we'll make sure that we continue on course. So so thank you.
You bet.
With that, uh we can turn to appointments, and I believe we do not have any appointments for this evening. And next would be to consider public comments on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public with comments? Seeing none, we can go to the Town Administrator Select Board Reports, and I'll start with you, Tom.
Sure, thank you. Um so uh I'm 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 just gonna give one, and I believe Art has one as well. So we've had some movement in the COVID world, so I just want to bring everyone up to speed with where we stand. So uh regarded through the week ending May seventh, uh Hingham has experienced a hundred and three confirmed improbable cases. That number is up seventy-two percent over the sixty cases experienced through the week ending April thirtieth, which in itself was up uh twenty-two percent um over uh from the week ending April twenty-third. So we're seeing a regular and steady climb. Uh these numbers, in fact, as we've said before, only capture uh the cases uh that are from PCR tests and are certainly an undercount because most people are doing at-home testing right now. Um the CDC, this is an important, I want to, I want to point this out to a few, to everybody, uh a few points here to everybody. The CDC looks at a combination of three metrics to measure uh the COVID nineteen level in our county, and they do it by county. Uh this data is updated weekly on Thursdays, and it's based on new admissions and inpatient bed metrics. Uh based on the current, the current level of new cases per one hundred thousand population over the past seven days. So currently Plymouth County is listed as a medium risk uh by the CDC. So, you know, there's a series of met, a series of steps that we've all heard a hundred times that we should be taking to mitigate these risks. Uh it's, you know, staying up to date with vaccines, getting tested, wearing a mask. Certainly when you're on public transportation and others, in other places, even indoors, especially if you've had a positive test, you may wear, uh you may choose to wear a mask at uh anytime uh in general, and if you have a high risk for severe illness, wearing a mask indoors will will add precaution, is an additive caution as well. We will continue to monitor this data and take coordinated action. Uh and as the CDC says, i- if we were to determine that our COVID nineteen level were to move from the medium level that it is up to the high level, then we would uh potentially follow the CDC's advice and recommend wearing masks indoors again. I can't believe I'm saying this, but that's where this data is is trending. So I just want to make sure everybody understands. So as we can see, there is a significant uptick in the number of cases in Hingham. There, this is very concerning, and we are monitoring it uh as the trend, the trend could end up with a new mask recommendation. Uh we will certainly report out uh as we know. So that's what I have.
Tom, uh do you know if there are any issues in terms of availability of vaccinations? Uh whether we're continuing to offer assistance to residents, we might need transportation to get vaccinated. Any, any, any thoughts about the what we can do to uh help support our residents?
Sure, uh people who are having trouble getting to the um to a vaccination, if that's, if they needed help with that, they could call the the senior center, there's a, there are vans available for transportation that way. I will say that um anecdotally, I have um had some experience recently with scheduling uh vaccination booster appointments, and they're very easy to get, uh very quick turnaround. Pretty much pick your date, and you can generally get in at a at a relatively convenient location. Uh all of the the pharmacies are providing this uh in and around Hingham, so.
Yep, I mean, that that was my experience, got an appointment the same day I got online, so yeah, that's great. Liz, any questions on the uh Town Administrator's Report?
Yes, just a question, Tom, about um the numbers. I agree with you, it's it's probably underreported because so many people I agree with you, it's, it's probably under-reported because so many people are testing at home. So what's the best thing for, for residents to do if they have a positive test?
Sure, thanks for asking that. They, if someone is at home and tests positive, the best thing to do is to notify our local board of health. You can call them, you can email them, just let them know. And then that number will get counted in our, in our data so that we're, we're trying, as we make decisions about next steps and how to keep people safe, we'll have better information to go by. So if, if you have a positive test at homes, you or someone in your family, you should try to report that out to the local board of health.
And are we still reporting that on the website? Those numbers?
Art or Michelle, do you guys know if those numbers are being updated?
We have not recently, Tom.
Yeah, I think, I think we took the, 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 what do we call it? The, yeah, the dashboard down, probably around the end of April, if I remember right.
Okay. I mean, if we see this upward trend or we're getting even close to trending towards, you know, another mass policy, I, I think that would be important to put back on the website.
Yeah, completely agree, Liz. And, and thankfully we have it, it's easy enough to, you know, update the numbers in it and get it back on the site.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Bill?
My only question, Tom, and just to clarify, in case we have media on the line. The, the mask would be a recommendation, Tom, correct? It would not be any sort of mandate?
Yeah, no, I don't foresee going back to mandates. Okay, but yeah, the CDC is saying that if you get to a high status, then they, then they recommend that we recommend masking up.
Yeah, understood, thank you.
Yep.
And, and Tom, could you just discuss a little bit how we are interfacing with the board of health?
Sure, so I have daily, often multiple times a day conversations with the executive health officer who, as we make decisions, it gets, that, that information gets portrayed back to the chair of the board of health and they will act as they see fit based on the information that she provides them.
Great, thank you. Okay, Michelle, anything to report?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
And Arthur?
Good evening, everyone. I just have one item to share and that is working with, with Tom and the American Red Cross. I'm, I'm pleased to report that we're scheduling the first blood drive in Town Hall in some time. We've got it set for Tuesday, the 30th, excuse me, 31st of, of May from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. There will be information that we'll share shortly to, to share with the community to encourage folks to sign up and, and donate some blood and make a contribution here in the community.
Now, if you don't mind, Joe, I'd like to piggyback on that for a sec. So there is a nationwide shortage, certainly a regional shortage in blood. That is one of the, the driving factors behind this effort. Art's done a great job working with the American Red Cross and organizing this. This is open to the general public, as Art said, and we want to make sure that everyone knows that. And, you know, we'd like to get to the point where we're turning people away because it's just too much, too many donations there in our window. So, but we'll give more information to make sure everybody knows how to register and, and commit and participate.
Let me ask a question about a blood drive that I've not asked before. If someone has had COVID, can they still give blood?
Art, do you know if the Red Cross has an answer on that?
I don't have that answer, Joe. Well, I'll get that and we'll, we'll get it to you and we'll be sure that's part of the information we share with the community.
I, I suspect the answer is yes, but that is likely to be a question that people will ask. Great, thank you, Arthur. Liz, anything to report this evening?
Just a couple of things, the Sustainable Budget Task Force got back together yesterday. We're identifying some projects that we'll be working on throughout the summer. One of the first things that we want to do is present to the new superintendent, Dr. Adams, before Gary Mastis leaves, so that I'll have more on that soon. The Harbor Development Committee is just, is working on their master plan and they have been asking for community input. So the anchor actually just did a great article on it today or, or yesterday. There will be three visioning sessions where people can email comments, what they'd like to see or what their vision is for the, for the Harbor, to the Harbor Development Committee. And then just a reminder to, to vote on Saturday, election day, polls are open eight to eight. And if people have questions, they can call the town clerk or go to the website because we do have new precincts. So hopefully everybody knows their polling location, but all of that information is online.
Thank you, Liz. Bill?
On Friday at 1:00 at Town Hall, we'll be having a service honoring police officers who are killed in the line of duty. I, it's, I believe it's the last day of Police Week, it's a service we do every year. So it's a nice service we do at Town Hall and it's 1:00 outside on Friday. If people can attend it, it'd be great to support our police department. Thank you.
So I'm gonna pick up on what Bill said and also on Liz. So just to put some numbers behind the desks of police officers, about 140 to 160 officers are killed in the line of duty every year. So we, we really need to honor, honor our fallen officers. And so if you can make it on the 13th of May, this Friday at 1:00, that would be appreciated. And then Liz, you mentioned the election coming up. My three-year term ends and this is the last meeting of my term. If I am re-elected, I hope to re-join you. And it's been a pleasure and an honor working with all of you.
Yes, Joe, I'm sorry, I'm missing, probably not recognizing that, but I'm fully confident that we'll see you next Tuesday.
Yeah, well, I'm very confident we'll see you next Tuesday, Joe.
Best of luck, Joe, best of luck.
Good luck, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough one for you on Saturday.
And so with that, I am prepared to accept a, oh, before I do that, the proclamation that we just did for Rabbi Joseph, if we can get that signed, because I need to be picking it up Friday morning, the hard copy to bring it over to the synagogue. So if sometime this week, I, I believe it's gonna be available, Sharon's gonna make it available, so we can just go in and sign it. And with that, I, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. We are adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.